Here.
Ms. Capabianca.
Yes.
Mr. Corey is remote.
Here.
Mr. Cronin.
Here.
Mr. Kretis.
Here.
Mr. Ugalito is excused, Ms. Holm, here. Mr. Kisco.
Yes.
Mr. Putnam.
Here.
Ms. Toder.
Here.
Mayor Carbone or... Ms. Ferguson.
Here.
Ms. Harrell.
Here.
Ms. Pamazuski.
Here.
Mr. Cabola.
Here.
Mr. Petrazzelli.
Here.
Ms. Schulte.
Here.
Ms. Vians.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Thank you. I'd like to, if I could, make a motion to modify the liaison report section. Either to... Either we've talked about it, I think, every meeting for the last few months. Have a brief discussion about how to present the reports going forward. Whether it be in an email or to Superintendent Wilson's discretion, discretion to have his admins report out in person if they're here. I mean, we could probably talk about that just for a couple of minutes. I don't want to go too crazy with it, but if we could just... Does someone want to second that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Hi. Thank you. If someone wanted to second that motion?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Hi. Thank you. School community service public participation. The board invites members of the community to speak on topics to be addressed in the agenda or other topics of interest. Individuals wishing to make comments must state their name and address at the beginning of the comment. The board will not allow comments regarding specific staff members, students, or personal grievances. Courtesy is expected in this limited public forum. The participating time will be limited to three minutes per person and ten minutes overall. So, one sound effort is ready when on your public line? Thank you. My congratulations.
Thank you. I don't think the student is here, Brian. The way of no... But I think it is still important to recognize the student Natalie Cox has been named a commended student in the 2024 National Merit Scholarship Program. About thirty-four thousand commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue into the 2024 competition for National Merit Scholarship Awards. Commended students placed among the top fifty thousand students entered the 2024 competition by taking the 2022 preliminary SAT National Merit Squad... National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, the PSAT. Those being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. These students represent a valuable national resource, recognizing their accomplishments as well as their key role, their supposed play in their academic development. It is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. And we have a reward for her this evening, which I will gladly go and present to her.
Congratulations. Great points.
I... We have two members. In academic news.
Can I just come up to the table later? You can actually put your chairs right over, sorry about that. Welcome, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you for having us. In academic, there was, we're almost one fourth of the way through the school year as quarter ones coming to a close on November second. Our THS juniors participated in SAP this month. In our child development class, Mary Subshado, the executive director of Torrington Child Care Center, visited child development to students. Mary spoke to the students about the preschool program at her center. Shared her interview questions and their hiring process and discussed workplace readiness as she looks for her work and her employees. Students in our health classes participated in the Save a Life Tour. Ben was Save a Life Tour came and gave some of our students a chance to try distracted driving and a driving wheel impaired simulator. The kids all seemed to enjoy trying it and seeing how difficult it was. Afterwards, they were able to sign a pledge to be a safe driver and pick up a bracelet and a pledge card. The UConn intro the allied health profession funds. Hosted Dr. Matthew Hall was a sports medicine physician with UConn and UConn Health. He is the director of UConn Primary Care Sports Medicine Fellowship, as well as the chief physician for UConn Men's Soccer, Women's Ice Hockey, and Women's Basketball. He even brought the NCAA Women's Basketball Championship ring from the 2016 National Championship for the students to see. The students were really engaged and asked amazing questions. Torrington High School hosted its first annual Harvest Festival, which was a great success. This was a great day that supported many of our student clubs at THS. There were thirty-seven vendors at the event. The pumpkin painting station and face painting stations were a huge success. The ONG presented to our students as a part of the ONG Bill's program, students then were able to take a tour of the THS building center and see the professions they were able to learn about in action. Mrs. Laura's high school robotics classes are in full swing. These students are hard at work applying their engineering mindset and problem-solving skills to build competitive robots. They're pushing the limits of creativity and innovation. This after-class not only equips them with essential engineering and workforce skills, but also provides them with hard evidence to demonstrate their commitment to the field of engineering. Setting them apart in college applications. We would also like to acknowledge all how all senior nights are starting to come to an end as football is next week and just congratulate everyone on their successful seasons. And closing in on the fall sports.
Great. I apologize, I didn't get your names at the beginning.
Oh, I'm Nicholas Nowitzki. And I'm Ali Dubois.
Great, thank you guys so much for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guys, feel free if you have things to do, you don't have to stay, we appreciate you coming for the update.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Information sharing session, just quickly before we go into that, I just wanted to welcome Dean Cabola, who is our new facilities manager. This is your first pleasure meeting, so welcome for those that don't know you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. On October tenth, Ms. Ferguson and I were invited to Southwest School to listen to a performer that they had in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. He was amazing. The students were totally engaged, the teachers were engaged, the cafeteria staff, they got up and did some dancing. It was really cool. The students were so impulsive and really wanted to learn more. So, thank you to Mary Ann and the team at Southwest for putting that on with that, that was amazing. We had a lot of fun with that.
We did, we were dancing.
Jealous that I can't play guitar or sing like that, but anything's happening. You know, as our students said tonight, so proud of our student athletes. It takes so much to be a student athlete, work in the classroom, and then to put it on the field as we have behind us tonight with our soccer program. Really proud of the effort that all of the teams have been putting forward this fall, they're really doing a great job. In terms of communication, we're going to continue to communicate through multiple platforms, our Power School Messenger, as well as our social media sites. And we actually talked with members of our team from the schools to really combine our message. So, if something really is awesome going into the buildings, to share with our district page and vice versa. So, while we're out and about and good to see, but it's really good to share the message across just in case parents are kind of one-stop shopping, if you will. And I don't think they are because we are linking them and Ally and her team are doing a great job with that. But just another way to get our message out there. Continuing to be visible in the buildings is something that is paramount to central office administration, and we will continue to do so. And that's to see whether the great work that's going on in the buildings are our students, our teachers, our administrators, and everyone. It's a highlight for us when we get to go in and hang out with the students, whether it be in lunchroom or in classrooms or wherever it may be. So, it's a highlight for us that we'd like to share. Another highlight when we're in the building is to see our new reading program. We know the board has invested greatly in that reading program, and that reading program is really, really a showcase when we go in, we're seeing it. Seeing the energy in the classroom, seeing the students really get involved, and the teachers really immersing themselves in it. It is a lot of work, but it's work well spent. They mentioned the Harvest Festival, and the Harvest Festival was really awesome. I didn't really win anything. I spent money, but I didn't win anything, but it was a really good cause and it was really good for our students. And I know the face painting was a hit, but I did not get my face painted, but I think it was just a great day overall and it was a good give back and a good fundraiser. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Human Resources Report. Hello, everyone. So, you have our vacancies, and as you know, I turn this in on Friday, and we still continue to work. So, the updates as of now are that the special edit focal is filled, so that position is, we have a person in place now. The kindergarten position that is listed here is vacant, I believe they were interviewing this week, so I'm confident that we're going to have that one filled. The T-Sol bilingual teacher, struggling to get candidates on that, but I'm happy to report that we do have a qualified substitute, somebody that's been a substitute for a while for us who meets criteria to be in the position, has agreed to be a long-term sub in the position indefinitely while we continue to recruit for it. So, we've got the position covered while we continue to try to find candidates. So, with respect to the classified positions, we got a recommendation for one of the paras today. And the secretary, we did interviews this week, so we'll have that one done. And the cafeteria workers, we are still trying to recruit candidates for those last two vacancies. The sub rates, as I shared with you last month, when I gave you the mid-month report, still not quite where we want them to be, but they continue to go up. The para number is definitely double what we had last year. So, just to give you a sense, last year at this time, our teacher sub fill rate was fifty-three percent and our para sub fill rate was twenty-five percent. So, you can see that our para number went up significantly. So, ESS has done a nice job of getting candidates for the paras. The teachers were still struggling, but everybody in Connecticut is struggling, so it really is a difficult market right now. So, we're really trying to dig into the data to see how we can be more competitive. I did just share out the flyer again with our staff on their referral program to see if we can kind of encourage people. Our ESS rep has been in district two to three days a week on the phone, yeah, in my office, camped in my office. Recruiting, calling, getting people to fill jobs, people coming in to do their onboarding for Torrington. So, it's not for lack of them trying, I just, I see it. You'll see when I share the recruitment efforts that we went to the job fair, ESS was also at the job fair. So, as we had candidates coming up to us, if they weren't quite interested in full-time, I'd send them right over to her table. So, we really are working collaboratively, so I'm happy with their customer service. We're not, we're not quite happy with all the results yet, but we're hoping we're going to get there, so. More to come on that. Our absences are actually down from where they were at this time last year, so that's good news, and you'll see on the next page for detail. And then just some of our initiative updates, we went to the Gilbert School for a job fair, and it was nice. We had a, we had a good flow of candidates and had a few of the candidates that we met at the table that did submit applications. And then we are attending a virtual career fair with Florida International University on November first. You know, in the interest of looking for some of our high-shirted area positions. So, we did start our HR site visits this month, and those continue to be very well received. I have my last one next Tuesday at the high school, so I'm going to be visiting the high school on Halloween, so that's fun. And our team lead mentors are doing their office hours for our new teachers. And we just actually sent out notification for the teacher residency program to our paras for the applications for next year, for the residency. So, we're looking forward to seeing if we can support any more of our internal classified staff with the residency programs. Fall yoga is up and running, so that's been exciting that we get to offer that to our staff. We're going to be meeting next week with our senior rep on our wellness calendar for this year, and we're going to look to schedule some of the things that were very well received last year, like the massage chairs and the stress management programs and other onsite exercise activities that we can offer for our staff. And then flu clinics are scheduled tomorrow and Friday in district, and I'm really confident that it's going to go better this year than it did last year because it was a little scheduling staphoos last year, but we have a better vendor this year. So, it seems to be very good, and they're providing some really good customers, so. And then the big news is that Torrington Public Schools received the William L. Hunter Award from the American Association of School Personnel Administrators, an organization that I belong to, on our efforts on diversity of recruitment and retention. So, I agree to receive that award. I think you guys had the policy committee meeting, so... And so, you know, we're very proud of that, we're excited about that, and it was nice to be recognized for the work that my office and the whole district is doing with that effort. So, I was very proud of that. So, I want to share that with the board.
Excited issue.
And then in the spirit of, you know, Michael's initiative, I just wanted to share some people that I wanted to recognize who caught me an awesome on my watch. So, Lisa Shimmels for going to the job fair with me, Kyle O'Toole for doing yoga provided for our staff. And then, of course, I want to recognize our teacher residents who are in the sites, Darlene Battle, Adriana Costa Brown, Gavin Woodward. And then our resident advisors and mentors that are working with those teachers, Tara Bruno, Valerie Balk, Suzanne Murray, and Melissa Stevenson. So, I just wanted to recognize those people. The detail on the next page, you can see the difference between the fill rates on the percentage that were filled by our staff versus the percentage filled by the ESS staff. And again, in comparison, you know, it's pretty close to the comparison last... So, last year, Kelly Services filled, I'm sorry, Torrington filled thirty-one percent of our jobs that we had last year. And you can see that ESS, Torrington filled thirty-seven percent this year. So, it's not too far off. You know, Kelly was a little bit better last year, it seems like, but it's still in the thirties, so we're comparable. It's just that, you know, that fill rate is still in the fifties, so that's where we're struggling, but we're working to get that up every day. But on the converse with the para number, last year, thirty-three percent of the para jobs were filled by Torrington Public School subs. This year, only seven percent were filled by Torrington Public Schools. The rest of those jobs were filled by ESS subs. So, they've made real progress with those para subs, but we've got to make more progress on the teacher subs, and that's really the message that we've been giving them, so. And then you can see the detail on, I'm going to continue to provide you with the information on the detail of the breakout of the absence reasons, just so that you can see that comparison. And then you have the staff turnover numbers below. Obviously, we're early on in the year, but this is actually, other than the secretary number, because we have such a small number of secretaries, and that just so happens to be there. All these numbers are down significantly from where we were at this time last year. So, we're not seeing the number of initial year resignations that we did at this time last year. So, that's a positive, that means we're doing good work with retention, so. And then Laura always shares pictures at times, so I thought I'd share some pictures with you. So, so that's the picture of the award that I received, a picture of Lisa and I at the job fair, and a picture of that child shared with me of the yoga. So, so that you can kind of see some of the good work we're doing in eighth grade.
Any questions? Same here. And I, it popped into my head when we were looking at vacancies, the Italian teacher.
Yes.
I think it was maybe last month or the month before, there was the possibility of online language classes. Is that something that's going to come to fruition this year?
So, so we started to explore that for the Italian position because we couldn't find a teacher.
Right.
And we were kind of testing the waters to see how it was going. It was a little bumpy, to say the least, the kind of the implementation, you know, for a variety of reasons. First of all, it was like last minute that we kind of approached them, and, you know, we were trying to take the time to get up and running. So, the implementation did not go very smooth, and then meanwhile, we had a candidate apply.
Oh, okay.
So, we now have a live teacher, somebody who is a known person in our, in our district, and we're excited to have her back in the district. And so, we now have a live teacher, so we're not doing that anymore. We canceled that contract, and we've been able to do that, that was plausible there. But I do think it's something we could continue to explore.
Right.
Because, so the company that provides that is partnered with ESS. So, we kind of have access to them through our ESS contracts. It's called proximity learning. And so, I think it might have been like a year ago, like Fiona mentioned Latin, right? It was something that we might want to try to explore offering for our students, but we don't have enough interest to hire a one-point-oh teacher.
Right.
It'd be hard to find somebody that might want to just do point-two. But could we do that through proximity and find a teacher that could teach one section virtually to be able to offer it for anybody who might want it? So, it's certainly something we could look at and explore for those one-off courses, that if we wanted to offer those as we continue to grow our pathways.
Right.
That's something we could definitely use and partner with because we have access to them through ESS.
Yeah, probably a good thing to stand up for.
Yeah.
Extra language.
And maybe if, you know, we had more time to set it up with a little more fidelity, maybe we could, it would work out a little better in the next, not rushing, right? I think it was like a week before school that we notified them.
Yeah, it was August we talked about.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. So, so I think part of it was timing, I don't think all of it was timing, I think, you know. So, so I think there was other issues, but...
Yeah, I was just wondering if any...
But, but I do think it's something maybe to consider in the future if we decide that they want to explore that, right? So, you know, we could invite him to come to a school improvement meeting for proximity learning, you can learn more about it, see if it's something that you want to hear more about, and we could do that for you, sure.
Great. Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of quick, just two quick questions, just for my ignorance here. When, in the staff turnover, when we say twenty-three, twenty-four, that's starting July one, right?
Well, it really, yes, for the twelve-month positions, but for the ten-month positions, we basically take that as anybody that didn't start the beginning of the school year. So, if we got a resignation August fifteenth from a teacher who never actually set foot in the classroom, I would consider that in last year's turnover. Because they worked the entire year last year, but they didn't work this year at all.
Okay, and the little footnotes over here, mid-year, what do we consider?
So, that means anybody that started after their first official workday for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and then resigned after they started. So, if a teacher started on August twenty-eighth and then a week later gave us notice, and then we held them for thirty days, that would be a mid-year resignation.
A mid-year resignation, okay.
Yeah, that means that they didn't, they didn't work the whole school year, so. Yeah. So, really, everybody right now is mid-year, so. But I keep track of that because every year I'm kind of trying to monitor that. Because that's been a metric that many districts have been looking at because it's been unusually high the last few years since COVID. You know, most teachers will start the year and finish their year and resign at the end of the year. But since COVID, that, that trend has changed a little bit, so we're seeing more mid-year resignations. So, the first year after COVID, I think we had fourteen mid-year resignations. I think Sue might remember, because I think Sue, you were questioning me a lot about those mid-year resignations because every month there was four on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it just kept popping up, it was so hard to follow. So, she did explain that the cutoff was...
Yeah.
Before the school started, the school year hadn't started yet. It would be...
So, it's just the number that I'm tracking so that I can kind of compare it to previous years, things like that. So, like at this time last year.
There were, it's on those two pages.
I think we had like five or six resignations already, so. So, just trying to look at those year-to-year comparisons to see if we're doing better with retaining our people.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have something quickly.
What do you guys all say?
Can you hear me?
Special education report. Okay, hi, everybody. So, I finally have our October first comparisons, this is, you know, our official numbers that we start out every year. I compared them to last year to just kind of get a picture of where we are now. We are starting with thirty-two more students and pre-K to twenty-two in special ed, that's including both in and of district. So, we're up a little tiny bit on the percentage there, but in district at our K through twelve, we remain constant at about fifteen percent. We had an increase of forty-three students in district in grades K through twelve, if you look at the chart. However, there's also been an increase in the total number of students, so that's why the percentage hasn't changed too much. Many students have moved in or have become our student homeless situations, and I shared that last month when we met. The homelessness continues to rise, we're double of where we started last, and we've had four more students identify as homeless just this week. So, I, yeah, I don't know what's happening, but it's, it's not good. We have an increase of ten more students in outplacements than this time last year, that's for a couple of reasons. First of all, I think a lot of it just has to do with the social, emotional impact that we have seen on students over the past few years with COVID and a lot of children having difficulty handling everything that's going on. And then on top of that, we ended the year last year with nine students that we had tried all year to secure outplacements for, and we couldn't get them because everything was false. And so, that's another huge issue. So, over the summer, we worked to try to get kids into outplacements, and we did. So, but we now have ten more students in, they didn't all just pop up this year, some of them were carried over, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. I gave you a breakdown, I'm not going to go over it, just of our different categories, and I, this time, no acronyms. Sorry, I'm trying to remember to do that. Our talented and gifted is up and running. So, Paulina is a little spitfire. She has been dying to start with these children since the first day back, I mean, have to wait, but she's now started. She's been seeing them for two weeks, I don't have it in pocket, but I do have pictures of him. And so, this is just some of the stuff that they've been doing over the first two weeks. One of the things they did was they studied molecules and solutions, and then they made rock candy to get a picture of that. They're also preparing for the Math Olympiad, which is a big competition that they are already registered to go to. Paulina is trying to do a little bit of fundraising because she has high hopes for a lot of big things this year. So, it's going to be great if we can try to do a little bit of fundraising for some of the trips and competitions that they want to. So, that's been exciting. Last night, there was a parent international Paulina had at the middle school, and there were sixteen parents that attended either live or virtually, and she was able to go through the PowerPoint presentation on some of the fun things she wants to do this year. So, some positive feedback, I actually got an email this morning from a parent wanting to know how to get his child into the tag program. So, that, that was kind of an exciting thing, I'm glad we finally got that going. Couple of things I just want to make you aware of. So, I mentioned this briefly before, but there were two things as far as litigation goes, and one of them is the change in the starting age in kindergarten. And so, I am monitoring that because that's going to impact us. We have children that are, some children who are now going to be in pre-K for a third year. So, in looking at the numbers and where we are, and then working with my pre-K people, I am probably going to need two more special education teachers for pre-K next year, as well as several other para educators. So, it's something that I think we just have to keep in mind. Our kindergarten numbers may be down a little, but, you know, we are going to probably have more kids that will be in our pre-K longer. Right now, though, our initial pre-K numbers are down by ten from last year, but referrals are coming in fast and furious. The other legal mandate has been in the eighteen to twenty-two, so I've mentioned that as well. We are required to keep children through the end of their twenty-second year. And so, last year, we had to keep six students that for this year that we had not anticipated, which ended up being an excess cost of two-hundred-and-six-thousand-five-eighty-five. That was for this year. And looking at what we have for next year, as of right now, there are twelve students who will be educated through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year that originally wouldn't have been. Six of them are in our TTA program, so they're in-house, but the other six are outplaced. So, that will likely add an additional cost of approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand. I just wanted you to be aware of that.
What was that last one?
I'm sorry?
The four-hundred-and-twenty-five.
That will be for the next full year, the students that will be with us for another year, next year, there are twelve of them, six of whom are outplaced. And maybe we'll be able to bring them to our TTA, but we'll try. That's it.
I have one question. When we saw this uptake in issue in the past, was kind of when that care closet was generated? Not from the board of ed to purchase, but if we could use some of the resources of people we know in the community room, is there items that we could procure through donations that would be helpful for that large group of kids? Now, I'm not putting on the stock answer now, but if there's anything, send it to us, we can try to see what we're able to...
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Michelle Anderson, our homeless liaison, she's been great, and we are on the phone all the time, and she's been able to secure different things for us, whether it's gas cards or stop and shop cards, you know, different things like that. So, she's working really hard on that.
Okay, because the last time we met with the kids, one of the things they wanted at that time was clinic fitness membership so that they could use the showering facilities and stuff there. So, if you guys can kind of talk to them and see if just...
Okay.
Know, because, you know, between all of us, I think we have a lot of people we could reach out to in the community to try to...
Sure, I haven't heard of people asking for that, but I'll mention that's Michelle, she communicated.
They're selling together and sending it to me and the board, and see what we can do to help these kids. But I'm sorry, John, Sue, what?
Just that, this pre-K implications for the five-year kindergarten entry level. I'm on the Head Start Early Head Start Policy Council, and they were talking about this too, and this is a temporary thing, eventually it all sorts.
Sure.
So, for a year or two or more, we will need a couple of extra teachers?
Yeah, I'm not really sure how it's going to pan out, but I'm not sure if they'll change the starting date. I've wondered if maybe we would be starting pre-K a little bit later, but I don't know if that's anything, but that's going to happen with the state. But, you know, as of right now, if the child is turning three on their third birthday, they're eligible. You know, as of right now, if the child is turning, um, three on their third birthday, they're eligible. To come into our pre-K and so now that they can't enter till they're five, we really could have more children. That are gonna be with us.
We'll need new teachers for a couple of years.
Yeah, probably. And then, you know, we'll see how everything.
Okay, one thing before I leave this, uh, Mr. Curry had a question for Kim, so when we're done with this, if we, he couldn't get in, he couldn't be heard, so. When, when we're done with this.
Um, so a couple of quick things, on the, in the beginning where you, where you were talking about the ten. Additional students in out placements and nine from the end of last year, is our total of nineteen?
No, no, it's just some. Yeah, so I was just talking about last October first, where we were with our outplacement. And this year, the fact that we are up. Ten, and it's just kind of opposite of where I've like, because I really brought down the outplacement numbers. And now we're starting up ten. Um, so in trying to analyze what's going on with our numbers. Trying to figure out, you know, what is that difference? Well, that was one of the big differences there, not being able to do our outplacements last year.
And that's, and each one is a different. Dollar amount. Oh, you sound the instance, right, okay, so do we, do we have set aside for that?
As far as our outplace kids? Yeah, I mean, I, I know for. Yeah, the uptake, I, I kind of monitored that.
Okay.
Yeah, we're usually pretty good, um, so we should be okay.
And then, uh, in the eighteen to twenty-two, I don't think anybody was prepared for this. Um, not looking at the next school year, but this school year, the two hundred and six thousand five hundred eighty-five.
We're okay. Yeah, I'm okay with where I was, with what I planned out for my tuition and. Don't worry. Got it, but just I want you to be aware of where we have to be next year.
She's rejecting this down the head, so.
And we will.
So like last year, so you had ten students that were kind of waitlisted?
Yeah, that's really what it was, yeah.
We got our ten kids in now, are. There're gonna be more kids that are waitlisted where we can't get them in the program?
Uh, well, it's gonna be rough, yes, it's gonna be a rough year, um. So I'm hoping we're not gonna have that place, we're working really hard to meet needs in, but yeah, it's a reality. So, you know, if we have, we can have somebody move in. Um, and we could be trying really hard with that student, and if it's not working out and we need to go that room. It's quite likely that we'll go to PPT, we'll recommend seven or eight different schools we want to try. And then we'll make phone calls and we'll find out that six of the eight are full. And it's the start of the school year, so they're already full and, you know, then they'll have maybe two schools and then we're pressing our fingers. That the student will get into at least one of that. Um, because if not, it makes it difficult for us because we still need to educate that child. Uh, and I have to figure out how we're gonna do that when he can't be in our schools and we don't have an excellent school.
So as far as like planning ahead, can we expect like another five or six throughout this?
You know, I, I don't know.
Guesstimate?
Um, yeah, I guess I'd have to look and see from start to finish where I was. Um, I know the very first year I was here, I think we. We went down a grade number and then I want to say that the ba, the next year was like up maybe six. I'd have to look and see, I can get that information for you, but I don't have all my numbers from when I started.
Yeah, with all the polished up, it sounds good, but I just, you know, other things, if we have another five or six, I don't know if that puts us out of the.
No, you know, it really doesn't because when I plan every year for our tuition. Special ed is always that great unknown, I can have a kid move in tomorrow with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar price tax. I could have one move out with. You know, so it's just. We just keep doing that and looking at the numbers and, um, and figuring things out, but so far, you know, I've been okay. With, um, looking at the numbers and planning pretty well that we've been okay, so.
And the pre-K thing, uh, somebody's gotta help me out here, I remember reading something that they're starting, they're changing age. It doesn't go until December thirty-first, is this related to that?
That's what this is.
So does that mean, so does that mean for the kids that are. We have to educate till twenty-two, that their date will change as well?
Well, yeah, it will kind of does because just like when we say when they, if we retain a child. Well, like, okay, well, if you keep him in that grade longer, that's one last year they're gonna get at the. Um, when they're eighteen to twenty-two, they're not gonna get all those years of transition services. But the number of students that go to the eighteen to twenty-two program is also very small.
Yeah, well, if we did six months less than we have to worry about, it could be something, right?
Well, they still have to go until the end of their twenty-second year. Um, it used to just be when they turned twenty-two. And now we have to, on their twenty-second birthday, they were done, but now it's to the end of that school year, they just changed.
Plus they're starting in preschool, one of these kids with us for preschool, so it's actually, they could be in a age three.
Four, uh, was it July or?
So for the pre-K, it's not, so the, for the kindergarteners is where the issue is. So now they're gonna be held back longer in pre-K, so if they would have been in there two years, it would be in there three years now.
Okay.
So it's actually longer that we're servicing on, on that.
Yeah, longer on that end, but I just wanted it shorter on this end.
I was just gonna say something, I'm gonna, I'm sorry, forgot. It'll pop back.
Two other questions, um. So, with the increase in out placements and kids, like is. Not for this time, but maybe next time, like what percentage of that is new residents versus existing residents?
Sure.
Not for new, but just, curious just to know that.
Okay.
And obviously the board always wants us to outplace students that aren't being successful.
Correct, right, right. Yeah, sometimes when we inherit a student too, they're already outplaced. So to us, it's a new outplacement, but we didn't just outplace them, you know.
And then just the only other thing, just to say, this homeless thing is just so troubling to me, but, um. Maybe when you speak with her just to about like. Some basic things, because one of the other things that they wanted us to get the last time was like garbage bags to keep their stuff dry when you were in school, so. Um, just really a comprehensiveness. Um, and then the other, we could identify because the. The big, big issue I got the last time was that. We have families that are making decisions to go into shelters with their younger kids. But the teenagers are not allowed to go in these shelters, so I'm not sure if we can identify any of those students that. Are on their own because they're aged out of the ability to go into the shelter, even though they might be sixteen years old.
Okay, and that's for sure.
More so just because I think that this is a community problem that we. Can't continue to ignore that the shelter are not allowing teenagers, which is a family shelter, so. And that's all it says. Any other questions, um? Yes, I'm sorry, Ed, are you still there?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead for Kim, sorry, I can see that on my phone.
No problem, um, I, let me just say, Laura, your presentation was just so thorough that I have to go back to ask him questions. Because I have none for you. But in all seriousness, so I noticed the two. Um, cafeteria worker positions that are open, and I know those are hard to fill, um. Do you know, Kim, which site those are at?
Uh, I do, yes, um. Hold on, give me one second, I can tell you. I was gonna say it off the top of my head, but I don't want to be wrong. Southwest one, yes, thank you very much. I'm gonna say another is middle school, but I could be wrong, no, I was right, middle school, yeah.
Yep, um, so I just, I'm wondering if, um, sort of in the same vein with cafeteria workers. If as we, in the fall here, right, start thinking about next year's budget and staffing. Um, if you could do, you know, an examination of. Like how many staff are at each site in the cafeterias and, and with. The change we made over the last couple of years to where every student can eat, um, you know, for free, which is great and I'm all for. Um, I know that there are a lot more meals going out of, uh, each of these kitchens. Um, and I've had the opportunity to speak with some of the cafeteria workers. Um, in the course of, uh, my sort of campaign activities just at their doors, uh, and a lot of them have expressed that they feel like. With the increased demand, um, you know, on their, on their workload, uh, that they could use some extra help. And I know these are really hard positions to hire for, so like so many things, we could increase the authorized strength and just never fill them. Um, but it's something I'm interested in because I, I don't think we really had a, a big discussion about. The, um, the staffing in the kitchens when we made that change, um, to, to give meals to all the kids. So just something that I, I think we ought to, to look ahead toward. Uh, in case there is a, a serious need there, which certainly many of the cafeteria workers have expressed that they believe there is, that's all I got.
Sure, so I, just to let you know, those assessments are done every year with the food service budget because it's a separate. Budget and they did add staffing positions after that first year. Um, a, and so there have been positions that have been added as a result of that already.
Oh, that, that's great, uh, and I'm, I'm all for that, um, it just, you know, if, if we're still having. These conversations, sorry, I'm outside at the moment, uh, if you can hear the traffic, I apologize. Uh, you know, if we're still having, you know, hearing that, uh, sort of on the street, if you will, um, you know, I, I just want to take a sort of a closer look at it. I really feel that, you know, we may end up with constant attrition in the cafeteria workers space. If, if we really are under strength, because as we all know, overworked people inevitably quit and it sort of perpetuates the cycle, that's all.
Yes, we can get you that information, sure.
Thank you, Ed, did you have any questions for Laura or you also?
No, I'm good, uh, I'm really excited about, uh, about the tag stuff, but I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Hey, everybody else all set? Before we go to monthly financials, I'm gonna do the liaison report because. So the question was, should each individual be reading their liaison reports or. That was one option, the second option was, should they be emailed to everybody? In advance so that the board members could ask any questions prior to the interview. Ask the question that we will, yes. Or, third, would we have someone from the.
Somewhat, well, in, in addition to emailing, we had talked about this at the end of last school year. Email the liaison reports, but if there were some big events going on in a specific building or something was coming up. That this would be the forum to. Point that out rather than reading what could be read and then it's around the. The page, just highlight the, the big events, or. If the admins are at the meetings, give them the opportunity to talk about their buildings and what's going on. I don't know, that would, you know, not, maybe you focus on one building. A month or two buildings a month, I don't know, just trying to, just trying to get away from sitting here and all this, just reading what it is that they sent to us. You know, give them the opportunity to share, those are just a few of the possibilities of the future delivery.
I'm all for letting Peter read his speech, that's, I'm all for it.
Shelley, this isn't on you because you're in three pages.
I kind of like the idea, I mean, it's. They always sit in the background, I mean, it's their building, it's their school, let them come up and, and talk about it. Ask questions and add lib and add whatever they like, I mean. I'm okay with them speaking.
We could hybrid and if they're not available, we could certainly backfill, we should. We could backfill and reinforce them or talk on their behalf if they're not available. So those information gets out there one way or another.
Any other? Does our superintendent, superintendent have any thoughts?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, I. I think two things, I think, you know, providing it ahead of time provides the board with opportunity to read what's going on. In the whole world, not just the, the connected people. Um, I think then if there's pertinent questions that the board wants clarification on. I think, you know, that would be appropriate to ask as long as it's done in advance, what I don't like to do is put anyone off the spot, right? I mean, our administrators come to the meetings and that's wonderful. But in order to give an answer that's thoughtful and thought out, I just think it's appropriate to ask ahead of time. Rather than just saying, oh, here, by the way, hey, you know, I could pick anyone to be on it, right, and of course, they're gonna be respectful and try to answer. But that may not be the answer that they wanted to get across, um, because they didn't have enough time to process, and so. Uh, I like kind of that hybrid version where. Maybe it's, it's asked then, you know, ahead of time, and then if there's any specific questions, you know, say, hey, look. We read everything, we have my questions for the middle. No problem, I call up Shelley and we can have a conversation and could you come present or conversation by high school, whatever the case may be. But this way, those questions, you know, and maybe even ask the questions ahead of time. You know, through me, and I can share that so that they come prepared with a well-thought-out response rather than an off-the-cuff response and then ad-lib response. Because that's not respectful of your time, meeting perspective, but I agree if those, the rest of the items along, if that's the case.
Everybody okay with that? So, uh, Marissa, forward. All of the liaison reports and it's a good reminder for everybody. That everything has to be in the Friday before. If people want. So, you know, try to reach out sooner to your schools to get your information and. Anyone that owes information for the agenda. On Friday at noon is the deadline, so.
I would also like to see like what's coming up. So that if we have a chance to attend. Possibly, you know, that would be helpful, that's just what's happening or what happened, but also what's been happening.
Just so I'm clear, so we need to get the liaison reports. To Marissa by Friday, we need to get them to the board ahead of time so they can read them and then get an answer or ask a question back. Here, Mr. Wilson, how do we, what's that timeline?
So my thought is if Marissa gets them, she'll send them out with the agenda.
And then if we have a question, if somebody has a question, to go back to the admins.
No, no, go to.
We'd have to get them back to you guys.
Yeah.
By one.
So if, you know, meeting on a Wednesday, you know, obviously I know Friday before is. I would say if we did it by Monday would be appropriate, I would want to do it the day of, to give people at least twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they are running. Buildings and things happen, right? So to get an, an appropriate response, that would be more than fair, just send it to me by then and I could. Have a conversation with them and say, hey, look, these are the three or four questions. You know, and I like the idea too, I mean, we know that not every. One is gonna have a question for every building, right, so if it's ten questions at high school and only one at Southwest. High school's coming that night, you know, and not that Southwest were blown off, we'll get you the answer to the question, but there'd be really no need. I think in a time perspective, but I, I think we, I would take that, take that into consideration where all the questions come in.
Any other questions? Monthly financials.
Thank you, so during the budget committee meeting, um, we went through it in some depth. And, um, I have nothing to fall out right now, I've got any materiality. Like one of our speakers mentioned, we're a quarter way into the school year, so now I'll be able to spot any trends I see, so. Um, I should have. More to talk about, uh, in subsequent meetings, um, now that we're getting into the school year. Uh, so one thing though, for those who weren't at the budget committee meeting. We did take in five thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and forty cents in, um. Uh, facility use, um, monies and. Marissa was kind enough to show me how to make sure it's on our reports going forward, so it'll be a line item on our reports going forward. That's all I have to say.
No questions? Uh, policies.
Sure, so the policy committee met a couple of weeks ago and we reviewed, uh, single policy. On really access for all, this policy was generated out of language that was added to the medical general statute. Uh, ten dash two twenty-one, um, really which, uh. Requires public schools to open access for students. So that they have the opportunity to demonstrate that they have the ability to be successful. In more talented forces and in, you know, more talented. Uh, so it's, it's grounded in statutes and the policy committee had a nice conversation about it and decided to bring it all to you here.
Questions? Uh leaving grading and calculation of grade point averages.
Yeah, so this one uh is an expansion of the rating policy that we did uh on the books, which very, very brief. It was a tiny one paragraph on simply weighted grading. Um this also was sort of born out of something that was that happened at the state level. Um it's called the Connecticut uh the Connecticut Automatic Admissions Program. Uh so basically what that is, is that high schools in Connecticut uh provide the the state college system, so not UConn, but the state college system. So Central, Southern, Eastern, West Con um with student ranking. And students in public high schools are then eligible for a free application to those state colleges and universities for admission. Um so that and so our policy that we're presenting you with encompasses that uh opportunity for kids and then also the weighted grading that we we were already looking at.
So if I could start and then Scott or he can jump in. Uh we talked about this at the facilities committee. It was an RFP process that went out. Scott made sure the RFP process was through. The company put in bids. The facilities committee did a really good job. They did their homework, did their due diligence, going through the process and seeing everything that was there. And it was determined that evening to bring forward to the full board uh the recommendation for Gibson's to get the contract provided. They signed the contract that would be vetted by our attorneys first.
Yeah, then um I believe, I don't know if it was killed, but one of the board members just had asked, are they doing Nogat Public Schools and that we were secondary and that's not the case. The case is that they subcontract. So if they need whoever is contracted to Nogat Public Schools will subcontract one of his trucks if they need some help, turn the thing in. And um Torrington is absolutely their number one priority and they're very excited and expressed that to me a few times.
And did we get an idea of they have enough employees?
Yes, so they have nine full-time employees, um which is a lot for a company like that. And then they also have four um subcontractors.
I don't know, we'd have to look into our insurance and if they're subcontracting out under our contract.
So the contract would would state that they were the contractor on record and that we would not provide for their subcontractors. However, and and I don't know this for certain, Dean will certainly meet with them and so will Scott as we move forward. You know, I I believe if they're short of a team or rotation, that would fall under them, not under us, and we would be protected by contract language. Dean actually came, had a meeting with me this morning um in preparation, knowing that the facilities committee did their homework. So we actually started fleshing things out from the RFP and other items that we wanted in the contract. I actually have the first draft ready to go um to our attorneys, so hopefully they give us the go-ahead and then forward after the board makes their decision this
Yeah, we're gonna be covering.
Sideways.
All right, it's procedural. So you're gonna have the attorneys review the contract and then will that contract go to facilities or?
Well, that's that's the board of schools, the the Gibsons from Reputation from the Facility Subcommittee. It's procedural in nature that they just sign the contract. They would not need to come back and to to review or contract. Less than four wishes to see the contract before it gets initiated, but it will be a standard contract by our, I mean, we started it to save us some time and energy and some expense from the law firm, but
Our thought behind that is it was pretty, they're pretty boilerplate, right? But the Excuse me.
Is it like the last contract?
It was a lot of it. Signed so long ago that I just wanted our legal firm to look over the contract.
So it's nothing like the other contract is the answer we're looking for.
It's nothing like, it's very, it's very different.
We had talked about facilities, there being a lot of fake isle stones in that contract to protect us. So if you guys are going down that road, we can certainly wear the snow because the RFP wasn't super specific on where things need to be put. And some of the board members had asked about, would that be spelled out in the actual contract? So there was no ambiguity as we got into the contract with these guys about what was supposed to be done, what wasn't supposed to be done.
Yes, and Dean's pretty comfortable now with going to each of the facilities a couple of times just for the specific purpose of you know, where is the snow going to be put? Um if we have sixteen inches of snow versus three inches and so I think we have it covered. And let's hope we have no snow, everybody.
And then just the only other thing was um the timing, in case there was a possibility of us having a delay versus
So Dean and I talked at night about that this morning. I mean, the the company that he's going to meet with, obviously having the expectation is that there's gonna be a goal for school delays or gas pumps for it. In the event that it's predicted to snow all day, that's the snow stopping early enough, then we can do a two-hour delay. We would love to entertain that. Dean and I spoke this morning and he's
Everybody else set with that? Do you have anything you wanted to add?
No, um I feel comfortable with uh
With this company.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, the custodians really want to stay involved in that too, so that's good.
I remember I wanted you today also about this particular site, so try to cover that.
Will they kick in free bowing?
No, I tried like
Maybe I can ask.
Okay, updated capital improvement.
So Dean, I thought you were gonna miss
Sorry. Go ahead. So, so I I I have been working close with Scott and and going through capital approval list. I started um digging in, digging in on a few of the items that we spoke about in subcommittee last week. So uh just moving forward on that.
And we also set up meetings, so um Dean's making his introductions, calling the actual vendors that we think um you know, are we're gonna work with and ones that we do work with, making introductions and setting up meetings. So that's what um we've been focused on, just so we could get things up and running and push things along. So I think that's progressing nicely, yeah.
The water heater was, so the water heater is on here so that
The two water heaters are on there. They're in the basement floor, so I'm working on that.
They have to be done, right?
He's got, he's got two more exams tonight, which
Yeah, I'm looking into that now. Possibly we can make some adjustments, so. Um I talked to to the head mate, this guy who found the blueprints for the job, so tomorrow I'm gonna go here and call this in details try to figure out if they both need to, so I'm in the middle of it right now.
Excellent, thank you.
Any other questions on the Then, as we're talking about capital, um next year's capital will have to go to budget, so we'll use in November because then we'll have to come back to the board so that we can submit it by December thirty-first.
We have it on the um next month.
Hey, calendar change, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh actually, I'd have to credit her, T E A president, pointing this out to us, wave your hands. It was a good catch on her behalf, um on her part. The way that our current calendar reads is that Thursday, November sixteenth is our monthly professional learning community day, our early release day for staffs. And then Friday conferences, parent conferences, Monday parent conferences, Tuesday parent conferences, with that kind of break. So um Sandy said, well, why are we doing it that way? Why aren't we doing the conferences all in, you know, the Thursday, Friday, Monday? And then the staff development day, uh the Tuesday before the holiday break, which we thought made a lot of sense. Um so we're bringing it forward. Uh we have uh we have structures in place to ensure the integrity and the fidelity of the professional learning day, the day for a holiday break. That did come up as a discussion item. And we believe that uh we can, we can do this and we can do it well. Uh so we're bringing it forward to the board for consideration. We just think it would be a more streamlined way to approach those half-days. They're all already scheduled early release day. It's just we went to block Thursday and a Tuesday uh content.
The question, I have only visits come up from several teachers who but at one point they had discussed a universal April vacation for us to stay.
That is not
But nothing ever
It it didn't come to fruition because of the well, there was a nu- number of reasons, is my understanding. One of them being bumped a lot of the professional learning days where people would try to have the same contractors come in. And then also having that university, so that bumped that April into the window where you everyone then was out and then everyone else was waiting for the other days. So by one district having it at one time and another another did jump, that so that freed up some people. But we are not mandated to do a university
It is tough though, you know, between sharing your kids or in another
It is. I I experienced that a little time. But I do, I do think segue, I'm sorry, were there any questions on that? Because I think that's a good segue into the next, the calendar. Uh well, I think if you look at the calendar, you know, very similar to this year in terms of times. Um what I think also very neat is in April, having that day um for Good Friday and then the following week off. So that's a nice extension where the students would end and the teachers would end and then have a nice you know, kind of a known or break into it, where some districts don't do that. They actually incorporate the eighteenth, which would normally be a holiday anyway, and they bury that into the other day. So you're actually losing the day's vacation. So the theory behind that and rationale behind that, I like to do it the other way, so then you actually gain a day. And it's nicer in the spring, hopefully, um even though, as I said, we're not getting into snow. Um it is nicer in the spring to hopefully have some time and recharge the batteries and then come back really finish the year out strong. So that's the one perk about being able to juggle our April break. Uh I know a lot of other districts do do it the week before, but as I said, then I think you technically lose a day even though you gain it somewhere else. So that's really the the big change if you're looking at the new twenty-four, twenty-five proposed calendar. We do start earlier as usual, um but that is for new teacher orientation. It's for convocation. It's for professional development days. All the things we need to get in and then we take that little break uh for Labor Day. And then the rest pretty much coincides with how we did it this year.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, trick. He has S Johnson, open a research across the Massachusetts.
So board members may recall last year, this was the field trip to Boston. I think they also ran some to New York sponsored by Brooklyn Memorial. Um it happens on multiple dates throughout the year. And last year, the board had decided to move all the dates kind of in one, in a bundle. Uh this proposal came through in that same fashion uh from Torrington High School. Uh all the dates on this particular proposal are in December, um but it would be multiple dates. And for those of you who are new to the group, it's students who are tapped uh through the guidance office at the high school. They go to this research facility in Boston and they participate in some um I don't want to call them evaluations or assessment, but in some activities that help them to learn about themselves and really what their perhaps uh best right, what are their qualities in terms of future aspirations for careers? What might they um want to pursue through, you know, higher education? Or perhaps, you know, in the workforce that helps them to learn about themselves and really where their innate talents lie. And how are they picked? Um I think there's a referral process. It goes, I don't think, I know, it's a referral process. There can be a teacher referral. Their guidance counselors play an active role in this. You know, they're in constant conversations with their students and students who are, you know, either particularly curious or are struggling perhaps and know what I want to do and need a little bit of teasing that out. Oh, yeah, I this, this is voluntary. Yeah. Children don't have to participate. Yes. And uh you know, parents are all too, I'd like my child to be considered from the Southwood.
How are they notified that it's an opportunity? Probably the guidance
Yes, the guidance counselors run. It's it's really a guidance sort of function. Um I mean, we used to take these Meyer breaks. I mean, if if anybody ever did that as a student, it's very similar. Yeah. Hey, any questions on that?
Thank you. Media reports, budget. Um Scott pretty much covered everything that's going on. We do have, to your point, the twenty-four, twenty-five capital plan that the stocks are next month. Um and then I'm sure kind of looking forward to not really how the budget looks after the first quarter, so we'll see how that goes. That's all I can think about yet. One other, um at the Board of Finance meeting, they said that the audit may be presented at the November meeting, which would be the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week. However, we received no formal notification of that. Um but it was stated that the Board of Finance, some people may want to pencil it in. In that case, that comes to fruition, but we've received bill of notification. For the Tuesday of, it's the week of Thanksgiving, the Tuesday.
So Marissa's good about, or Heather either sent you things or you've spotted them, so we may just have to look.
Uh we covered pretty much everything that, a lot that we did. Uh let's talk about the team that moved at our last facilities meeting, which is uh basically finalizing the contract. We should have that for our next facilities meeting. We're also gonna do a little bit more digging and for the outline for building capacity. So we have, have an idea what our capacity is when we're prepared for going into the middle school, high school transition. H P C mandate update. There's really no new news on that. He and the superintendent and his team, they're gonna be monitoring that closely once we get more information. As far as what's gonna be included in that mandate, we'll have to judge accordingly. Um and the capital improvement list, we already covered that. And the snow contract, we covered that as well. Is there anything else anybody would like to add? That I forgot or left out? Questions?
Questions for Glenn?
Small improvement meeting included a community
Small improvement meeting included a community partner report from Kids Play. When Marriott was there and told us what was going on relates to schools, Kids Play. And Dr. Deacon was asked for a very brief beginning. How's it going off the ground with the new reading program? And said, it's off the start. Okay, we will be next Wednesday, a week from today, starting to go on the road again and be Vogel Wetmore on next Wednesday.
Questions?
I'm gonna wait, we'll be continuing with the fast one and anything else that. I'm sorry, when you're, anything has changed and we'll be at Vogel tomorrow.
Thank you, any questions for policy?
Building committee, thank you, everybody for coming for the joint meeting. Last week, I know that everyone had something every single night last week, so I appreciate you taking the time. The project, which is great, bumps in the road, we're gonna work through some of the bumps that are going on. But, you know, I would like to give a shout out, Dan from O N G is so extremely detailed and just forthcoming. Exactly, you know, what is going on and keeping us not construction people apprised of the project in a way that we can understand. I, I just think he's doing an amazing job and, you know, at Mario at this every day. It's, it is a tremendous amount of work. That I think even the packets we get, we don't realize how much is going into it. So that's appreciated and as you can see, the building is really progressing. When you drive it tonight, it will be amazing, so much different than it did last week. So really exciting time for Torrance.
Curriculum committee has not yet, but however, O T L is in the process, I selected opening the schedule, we'll have three meetings this year.
So anyone who has interest in surveying on the. Curriculum committee, so November is gonna be the time, there'll be a lot of changes in the board. So whatever you want to, committees you're interested in. We're definitively losing Kathy, which is very, very sad. You know, you've, you've really been a great asset to the board and you'll be missed. You're coming to the November meeting, but. So technically the new result will come out in December. But start giving it some thought for those of you that are definitely staying, what committees you want to be on. Because a lot of these things are gonna have to be reshuffled in December. So we prefer that people end up on committees that they want to be on, so. Maytime reports. Raise your hand if you want to jump ahead to them. Our new procedure will begin next month.
I was gonna ask Peter if you wanted to jump in and. Want a pilot? Wow, absolutely. And I got him off the hook, he wants to put himself on. Well, we can't hear you back there.
Off to a great start this year, of course. It feels like we just started, but we really didn't. Almost the end of October, ready, really moving fast. We are still hopeful that we will have our new playground installed by the. End of November, if Mother Nature cooperates, it looks like she will. Our weekly challenges have started, our assistant principal started that a couple of years ago. It's students, they complete these optional assignments each, each week. Alternating math or language arts. We pick winners for each grade level, they get little prizes, they get really excited, we hang their work on the wall. It's really a great way to honor the kids and get them to do a little bit of critical thinking. It's always like a kind of a little bit deeper thinking, more creative project that they do. Our first monthly assembly is going to take place this Friday. Students that exemplify our evil behavior, so they're safe, they're responsible, they're respectful, they get eagle tickets, they'll get honored at the assembly. For their good behavior by individuals, but also by. By class, so the classes that win will get a little either extra art, music, or P E time, depending on, on what they choose. And Marissa, if you're trying to type this, I will, I send it to you. Our Harvest Festival is scheduled for Saturday from noon to two. It's going to be between seventy five and eighty degrees on Sunday, so we'll do ball light. We will think about, when was the last time it rained on Saturday? We'll give them the credit for the, for the sunshine. We're gonna have games, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have music and dancing and decorating pumpkins. And all of our P T O folks did a great job pulling us together. We're gonna have hopefully, hopefully a really excellent and permanent cakewalk painted. We're gonna be doing that tomorrow after school, ready to go. Our student success teams are in full swing. We have held meetings on about a dozen or so students so far on academic or behavior concerns. These come from teachers that, that see something that they want to talk about. We get all of the minds together in the, in the room and make some decisions about what interventions the teacher can do in the classroom or interventions to do. During intervention time related to whatever it is, how we can support our kiddos that need it. New cafeteria options have been super popular, our little breakfast. Bag things that, that have come around are a great success. Lots of new choices and our cafeteria staff attended our open house night, ended up probably snacks and it was great. I just wanted to thank the board for adding an additional day of P E to our schedule. It's really made a difference. Kids love it, teachers love it, it's really a win win. Ready to work on their academics when they're done, they've got some extra energy out and the P E teachers are enjoying it as well, I think. So and the teachers get an extra, some extra planning to gather, which has been a huge help, especially with benchmark being placed. And we really do five and three generations come.
I think that went very well. It's a more personal feeling, it doesn't matter to me, just forget your, your tating it.
So Kelly, did you want me to read this or do you want to read it? I printed it.
No pressure.
Okay, it's long. I'll talk fast. Our school year is off to a great start, we have six hundred and forty five, we're going to thirty eight by the end of the year, at Torrance. The staff is embracing and learning our new literacy program during last week's P L C. Coaches collaborating, train teachers on how to manage the lesson time and E assessments. Our fall district assessments are done and the first cycle of intervention is well underway. We have student success team meetings every Friday to support teachers in creating SMART goals for students in math literacy or behavior. Or a combination of those. Grade level meetings have been focused on receiving and responding to feedback from staff about the literacy program. We ask them, what do you want our next meeting's agenda item to be? And it could be, you know, creating a bookshelf and benchmark or looking ahead and unpacking a unit, just depends on what the team decides. After staff saw our schoolwide expectations in September, students are earning awesome cards for demonstrating respect, responsibility and safety everywhere in the school. Each month, we raffle experiences like extra P E, private music lessons, special art projects. And students are enjoying the expanded breakfast and lunch menu that is now offered. I will say cereal in the classroom is a bit of a challenge, but we'll get through it. We also offer birthday treats for parents to order for the classroom. We were doing that last year, but even with the new program and the new person in charge, we're able to do that again. Student council and dance team are already up and running, dancing students get dropped off at eight twenty on Wednesdays, we're doing it before school this year. And student council is running during our either lunch or recess every other week. And our leaders this year are Kim Wendberg and Erica McMurty. And Erica also runs the dance team. Our welcome back night was very well attended, we rattled off backpacks for full of supplies to students in each grade level who visited all their teachers. Parents were able to learn more about the curriculum and also receive support in joining Parent Square, which has been really a great way for us all to be on the same page. And using the same platform to message families. We had our first P T O meeting and it was very well attended, it was done jointly with Forbes and lots of families who we haven't seen, came out to that meeting, also because there were raffles, I think. We had a fall festival at Ruet Farms in conjunction with Forbes this past Saturday. Students were able to get pumpkin streets and entered to win several raffle prizes. Looking ahead, we should have received an invitation to our Veterans Day ceremony Friday, November tenth at nine forty five A M. We'll be planting flags like we did last year at nine fifteen outside. And board members should have received an invitation in their central office mailbox. Ms. Reinick's class is working with student council to run a food drive for November and we have a field trip to see that their performance of the Nutcracker in December. We're planning a visit from the Torrance Empire Department for kindergarten and we're making storybook pumpkins and dressing like our favorite character on Tuesday. Shelley, I hope you're prepared. Okay, so Southwest School, our welcome back night was really well attended, we had forty, forty seven percent of our families participate. First week of October, we had our data team meetings, every homeroom teacher had a chance to meet with the entire team to review student academic performance, attendance, behaviors and student strengths. From there, then the intervention team revamped their schedules for our tier two, tier three interventions. For the month of September, our student perfect attendance rate was thirty five percent of the school and that's students with no absences, no tardies and no disfeasibles. Thursday and Friday, tomorrow, Friday, it is the last of our classes to participate in the American mural project of that field trip up in Winston. That's the largest indoor collaborative mural in the world. And feedback has been amazing, kids get off the buses so excited about what they participated in. They hear the story about the American worker, they hear the story about how this was all brought together. And then they go into a class, studio art class with artists and create their own artwork. So that's been really fun and exciting. As Mr. Wilson shared with you, on October tenth, we had Degoro Resindes, who's known as El Charo de New York, performed for our students in a cab. That was just amazing, it was awesome, the kids felt like they were eaten in a restaurant. Our cafeteria staff prepared, prepared this very authentic Spanish lunch for them. I believe Mr. Burke said couldn't believe that was made from government chicken. It was really good. But they really, really enjoyed that day and they wrote these beautiful heartfelt thank you notes to him. And I shared that in the attachment, so there's some beautiful drawings that the kids did of the singer and everything and just wrote some really nice notes. And some of our English students wrote some of it in Spanish, which was really nice to hold. We have school pictures on Friday, so that went well. We kept it with our tradition at Southwest School where all of our grade five students put on Torrance High School caps and gowns because it's a progress. You don't get diploma just because you graduate twelfth grade. Portrait of a graduate, you're working through all the years, you're earning that diploma and diplomas aren't given away, they're earned. And so we stress that, we want them to know what it feels like to put on a captain gown, because someday you're gonna do it for real and it's here before you know it. And they love putting on those captain gowns. I don't know if we love putting on them anymore, it's getting challenging, but they do love putting them on. Let me do a nice class picture of each of the kids in it. We started recognizing students and staff with fire cards this past week. Fire cards are friends inspiring respect everywhere. And since we are the fire breathing dragons, let's spread fire throughout our whole school community. And they're displayed on the stairwell bulletin board and then we announce some morning announcements, what kids got them and what staff got them and why they got them. And then at the end of the week, they get the cards that flames a fire to bring home as tokens of appreciation. As Peter said, we, you know, we're sister schools, so we're looking forward to our Harvest Festival, which will be this Saturday, rain free. So can't wait to see how that goes and that's always really well attended. Student council up and running, we have thirty seven members this year and they meet every two, two weeks now. They're really ambitious, they're getting good kids. They are putting up, their, their first project is going to be a pet food drive for Friendly Hands Food Bank. And then we're putting a STEM contest in thereafter, where the homeroom that brings men in the most. Food is great, but every homeroom has to build a pet out of the food that's donated and it's gonna be a contest to see what is built. Our first spirit week is next week. This match Monday and then with Tuesday being Halloween, it's dress as your favorite book character. It's also our first school assembly that day where we'll recognize our Dragons of the Month for September and October. And our German Dragons, thank you Laura, very helpful to sponsor that, our German Dragons are from Voices and from D L C are performing in front of the entire screen body. And it's really exciting for them to do this and it's a brand new group this year, it's going really well and they've been preparing their Halloween songs. Wednesday is Jersey Sports Day, Thursday is Throwback Thursday and Friday is one of the kids' favorites, Dress Like A Teacher Day. And we dress like students. So it's a fun Friday event. And we're also working on planning our Veterans Day assembly, we're, we're gonna do ours on Thursday, November tenth, so that we're not competing with the same families. With our sister schools, so then the kids in both schools can have representation at both schools for their families, so we're excited about that. I think that's it. Work to Marissa so everyone can. Okay, thank you. And you know, T M S, we always expect great things, that was last year, this year we're expecting greater things through intentional decision making. So everything that we're doing, we're working around that decision making. So staff and students are enjoying the new schedule that we have, that was collaborated through the work of teachers last year. One of the particular benefits of it is students now have learning lab time with their core teachers all at the same time. So they're able to receive help from all of their core teachers, which is a huge benefit. Along with the intentional decision making, we are looking for opportunities to offer additional support. So through the support of O T L, we have an extended Viking Day, we're calling it, that will be starting at the end of this month. So it'll be part instructional support as well as some engaging activities to help some of our students want to be more at school. We've used an intentional process to select those students, so we're really working through our teams of teachers. And really solidifying our team instructors so that we're looking at every single child when we're making decisions. So that we decide what is the best for these students and then working in collaboration with O T L and with the families to really try to engage our students. So we're really excited about that beginning, our homework club is also up and running already, so we have students signing up for that twice a week. We once again have students advocating for new clubs and activities. This year, we're excited, we have a new gardening club, which we were fortunate, Miss Burris and Mr. Wilson were in when the student was pitching it to me. And it's really, it's really been great because between the gardening club, along with the support of our P T O. We are building an outdoors learning space for students and it's just really taken off. So we're excited about these pieces. Our cafeteria, as you know, three hundred kids in a cafeteria can always be a lot of fun. Our new, you know, students came up with a great program to flip that to the positive. So she actually has an incentive program through and we earn it as a grade level with grade level incentives for every twenty points that they earn. Once they get up to a hundred points, there's, you know, smaller things, but the big goal that they're all working for is a school wide, well, grade level wide. So whoever owns it first, we have escape rooms planned for them. So we're coordinating that to sort of help encourage all the positive behaviors. We've also had our first P T O meeting and I know in elementary, I get jealous sometimes to have so many people, but we're really excited. We had quite a few people and we're doing our first event this Friday night, which is Bunko, which is a whole lot of fun, there's still time to sign up if you want to join in. But we're excited for those pieces and we're excited that we saw a lot of newer faces. As Laura said, we had the tag event at T M S, which was wonderful. As Laura said, we had the tag event at TMS, which was wonderful. Paulina was so informative and the parents were so appreciative. And it was really nice because it was all the grade level, all the different schools. So I was able to see some of the families getting it a few years. So we really enjoyed that. We're working hard with our school counselors to build really purposeful relationships with our students. So they've begun a push-in program. They're through their first cycle. Where there'll be seventeen guaranteed, excuse me, seven guaranteed lessons for all of our sixth graders and the things that we find that. Often challenge them, conflict management, time management, conflict resolution. And we're really working with our students to build their advocacy skills. So we reorganized our whole office. So we have a students resource center. And I gotta tell you, they are taking full advantage. They are reporting themselves sometimes. It's really fun to watch. And see them work through the process of conflict resolution. We have amazing artwork going on. Our three D art teacher did an amazing project with all of his classes. Using water bottles where they painted. They created a sculpture out in our courtyard and the enthusiasm within the school community was amazing. Kids were on the second floor sort of watching as he was assembling it. So we are off to a great start. We've had our Washington DC meetings. We have three buses already scheduled for Washington DC trip. So we're up and running with the planning for that. We have Spirit Week this week. We have a student council of about thirty-two students. That is up and running as well. So we're really excited with the progress that our students made as well as all the work that our teachers and staff are doing to make it such a wonderful moment. Excuse me, Mr. Wilson.
Michael Klein sent me his and my, my paper.
Okay, so from Forbes, we're looking forward to a great Veterans Day assembly on November tenth. Our classes are working on their skids and crafts. It will be. Nice way to honor our veterans. Our student leadership will meet for the first time this week as they map out future school events. They're excited about their first event, which is a good food drive at Forbes this Saturday before Thanksgiving at the local Big Y. Our first units are wrapping up in math and literacy. Our local assessment scores are strong. We're looking forward to being able to build on that success in our upcoming win in intervention cycles. And we look forward to parent conferences and where my teachers will be developing further homeschool connections by sharing student progress.
And advance past our budget at the October general meeting. Nothing is exciting as what's going on in the school.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to approve the monthly financial. All those in favor?
Sue and Jeff, thank you.
Entertained a motion to approve the policy six oh one five six one 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 in a bundle. Second? All those in favor? Entertained a motion to award the snow removal contract to Gibson's property maintenance. All those in favor? Entertained a motion to approve the updated capital improvement list.
Second?
All those in favor?
Jeff, thank you.
Entertained a motion to approve the calendar change for twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five in a bundle.
Second?
All those in favor? Entertained a motion to approve the PHS Johnson O'Connor Research, Boston, Massachusetts.
So, second?
All those in favor? Entertained a motion to approve the Board of Education regular meeting minutes and the special meeting minutes in a bundle.
On the special minutes. We have Board chair to work with attorney money and attorney Ritter, and then of course the attorney Mooney.
One extra O in attorney.
It's not even on our copy.
It's the special.
Oh, I'm still getting the agenda. Sorry.
Remaking the motion with that change. All those in favor? Entertained a motion to receive the committee meeting minutes in a bundle.
Second?
All those in favor? Entertained a motion to receive the consent agenda. All those in favor? I have some upcoming agenda. We have monthly financials, capital plan. Fundraising, I think it might be a good time to go over the fundraising. Expectations, just so that everyone's on the same page with that. Any other items?
Sure, no be policy.
Did we get updates from the Mrs. Creedon on the yellow program? Where do we get those from? Okay. But maybe school, we guys can push that to the board. Any other items? All right, comments for the good of the order. Let's start on this side.
Welcome Dean.
I'm also, thank you. Great meeting. So glad our students came to report and obviously on behalf of the board, I will present the young lady, the Fisher Tidrick, and so I'm happy to do so. Good meeting. Welcome to the group, Dean. Thank you.
Uh, committee, welcome Dean and thank you for the teachers stepping up. I really think that. Meant a lot more coming out of their mouths, their expression, you know. They don't get much time to speak in front of us and I think it's a great time for them to be speaking out their ability.
Jim, congratulations on the award to you and your, off at your team, everybody that was involved in that. And I think this might be the last meeting we can welcome Dean at. Just letting you off the hook, so don't bring it up every time, right?
Great meeting. Welcome Dean. And thank you to the administrators. It was really nice to see your enthusiasm and excitement as you talked about it. Thank you.
Welcome Dean. And I echo it's, it's nice to see the enthusiasm when, I mean, we get excited too, but I think it's the same degree. As when you're talking what's, what's going on and it's, it's great to hear.
Welcome. Congratulations and congratulations to our national nerve.
Same equitable graduations for accomplishment. And are you still there?
I'm still here. Congratulations to everybody who won the award, who's both there and no longer there. The only thing I have to add, not that I expect anyone not to know, but this is our last meeting before the November seventh election. I will not electioneer. At this meeting, but instead just hope that all of our board members, administrators, faculty, staff, and families. Go out and vote for whomever they think will do the best job in their community. Unless, of course, you live in the handful of communities in the state where they voted in May, in which case you get a free pass. But otherwise, I'm just reminding everybody to go out and vote in person or absentee. I don't care how you do it. I don't care who you vote for. But let's make sure that everybody gets out to vote this year. That's all I got.
In future meetings, outline and then please just pencil in the possibility of that meeting that we did Thanksgiving. Entertained a motion to adjourn.